Let's move to next item, annual capital program report, Dr. Swift.
Thank you. Trustees, we very much appreciate at this last meeting of 2021 being able to bring you the capital improvement program report. I want to thank our community for their support. As we wrap up this school year 2021, wrap up this calendar year 2021, we reflect back, first of all, to two years ago in November of 2019, when our community supported really an historic bond in the fall of 2019. We will forever be grateful for what that means to the updating and the transformation of the learning and working experience in Ann Arbor Public Schools for our students, and our staff, and our community. And then we think about a year ago in December of 2020. And trustees, I'm not sure if you remember during COVID, December a year ago, we received three presentations on work that Mr. Emil Lautsana, Ms. Jill Minnick, our bond trustee committee have been working on devising the Phase One Plan of this bond. So that planning year resulted in a plan. We gathered community engagement on that plan. We brought it before the trustees on three occasions, and it was approved last December at this same meeting, second meeting in December. So now here we are in December of 2021. It is our great honor to bring forward the first annual report on the capital improvement program. So if we look at what we set out to do, and I appreciate that the trustees drove the campaign for this bond, we all worked on it together, and now our community has shown and demonstrated their support. Ms. Osinski is going to put up just a quick photo or representation of what we promised our community, you'll see on this slide coming up. So you can see there trustees that we set out, and you're very familiar, to really focus on transforming the student learning and teacher and staff work experience, the community experience in our schools in four areas. Teaching and learning, our critical mission, safety, health, and well-being, all around making sure our schools were safe and supportive places, sustainability and environmental responsibility with our infrastructure was a commitment that we made. And then also the support systems and services. I call it the stuff of doing school, whether that is musical instruments, buses for transportation, technology, all of that fits into that red square. So we set out a year ago on Phase One, Year One of this bond, and it really has impacted every building in the Ann Arbor Public Schools. It's designed to address every building. We take very seriously our responsibility to be good, strong stewards of the resources that our community has so graciously provided with this bond. I do want to thank the bond committee and Chair Rebecca Lazarus and members of the committee who have served, President Johnson and Trustee Baskett, and also Trustee Gaynor over this time to support our bond committee. I want to thank all in our community who've been a part of this endeavor. You'll see some of the highlights tonight as Mr. Lautsana, Ms. Minnick walk you through. This is all about things that our community has asked for and that our students need, air conditioning, solar installations, lighting, LED lighting, expansion of classrooms in areas of our city where we need more classrooms, the addition of preschool in areas where preschool classrooms are needed. This bond is about our students, our school, our future. And so if you look at the next slide, I know that the trustees have overseen every endeavor, every project, and I appreciate your careful attention to this. But you can see the capital improvement program is a combination of the bond fund, the sinking fund, and then those sinking fund dollars that are designated for the annual repairs to our properties. And so you can see here the total investments during this 2021 report that we're sharing this evening is over $54 million. I'm so proud of the difference that this investment makes for the educational experience that our students receive and that our staff work in, that our parents and community benefit from. And so with that, Mr. Lautsana, who has overseen this capital program along with the support of our team, and Ms. Minnick, who has overseen all the facilities, operations, and finance, will walk you through the report so that so we have an overview of where we've come with the bond. Thank you. Mr. Lautsana.
Thank you, Dr. Swift, and good evening, Board of Trustees, President Johnson, and our Republic Schools community. I've got a few slides here to share and happy to answer any questions that you may have. So we'll review briefly some of our bond commitments and the Phase One Plan. We'll run through some of our current and recently completed projects. Ms. Minnick will have a financial update. We'll have a preview of some upcoming projects, talk about our recent community engagement this last school year. We'll have an environmental sustainability update, and then we'll reveal, I guess, our new capital improvement program website, which is live as of this evening. And a big thank you to all of our trade and design and engineering partners, and of course, thank you to our community for their generous support of Ann Arbor Public Schools and the capital improvement program. So as Dr. Swift reviewed, the bond really focuses in these four areas. Of course, teaching and learning is the core mission of the school district, health, safety, and well-being, environmental sustainability, and those efficient and effective support systems and services, all those things that make school possible that not super exciting sometimes, but really we do need buses and we do need technology and we need all of these things to make school happen. So this is our overall bond Phase One Plan as approved by the board in December 2020. This is on the website. It breaks the school district down at the elementary level into some sectors. So you see here the projects planned for the southeast sector and the northeast sector and these, excuse me, these little boxes that you see, and you'll be able to see these more clearly on the website. But those are all the projects from 2021. So you will be seeing images and we'll talk about all of these projects in that first column. Same thing here, the southwest and the northwest sector. And then we have the K8s, secondary schools, our high schools and our other buildings. You'll see these green boxes here, that's Scarlet Middle School and Tappan Middle School, as well as Community High School, where we have active projects ongoing with significant upgrades to those facilities. And so now I'll just review some of the work we've been doing in the last year or so. We've made a big mess. We've ripped out a lot of stuff and we've put it all back together, things like boilers, ductwork, electrical infrastructure, plumbing infrastructure, ceilings, lights. It all starts with demolition, and then you take it from there and put it all back together better than it was before. One of the big commitments in the bond program was to get air conditioning in all of our buildings, and this chart summarizes where we are. In fall of 2020, when we started, 45% of our square footage was air conditioned, and that was 11 buildings. The reason that's so high out of 31 is the three comprehensive high schools, Skyline, Pioneer, and Huron all are currently air conditioned in their very large buildings. So their square footage kind of skews that a little bit. As of this fall, we added three more buildings to be air conditioned and up to 52%. And as we pick up steam, we anticipate fall of 2022, the coming fall, 24 buildings will have air conditioning, and then wrapping up in the following years by fall of 2024, 100% air conditioning in the majority of our buildings and classrooms. And we know air conditioning and thermal comfort is really important. There's a lot of science around student, teacher, health, and well-being relative to thermal comfort. Just anecdotally, we know from our own experience, when we're too hot or too cold, we're distracted, and it's been shown that that actually impacts performance and cognitive function. And the chart on the right, there will not be a quiz later, but this is called the psychometric chart, and it's a measure of temperature and humidity. And so across the bottom, you have temperature, in this case in centigrade, and humidity on this side, and we try to stay in this comfort zone, a mix of both temperature and humidity. So if it's too humid or too dry, that can be just a discomfort, or if it's too hot or too cold, it can also be distracting and impact performance. So air conditioning helps us stay in that comfort zone. And so this is where we are. This year, we started air conditioning projects at six elementary schools. Three of those have been completed, Dickin, Lakewood, and Mitchell. Angel, Burns Park, and Carpenter are close, but we're waiting electrical service upgrades to turn those systems on. At the three larger projects, Community High School, the third floor air conditioning is operational, and the next two floors, the second and the first, will be done in summer 2022, and then Scarlet and Tappan are in process for fall 2022 air conditioning being online. And this is just what some of that looks like at the elementary schools. And more extensively, at Community High School, Community High School, Tappan, and Scarlet, really, it's a complete mechanical systems upgrade. So it's new boilers, new ventilation system, new air conditioning, a complete new ductwork. So it's a very extensive process at these buildings. You can see here, Community High School, new boilers, new pumps. This is Scarlet Middle School, some condensing units on the left and new ventilation equipment on the right. Some ductwork, and we call this a ceiling cassette. This is a supplies conditioned air to the space. Another part that is not super expensive, but has a big impact on the classroom environment are the window treatments or the shades. And these are just some of the pictures. We didn't honestly have to look very hard for these pictures. There's a lot of this kind of condition in the school district, and as we're moving through with these air conditioning projects to every building, these window shades are part of that package, if you will. And so this is what the new blinds look like. They're roller shades, we call them. They don't have the multiple strings and all of this kind of stuff. It's a simple kind of dog chain pulley. Blinds go up, blinds come down, very solid, long-lasting, commercial-grade improvement. And you can see on the left, the buildings where that's been completed, and then as we move through Community, Scarlet, and Tappan, that's part of what's happening in the areas of the building. And there's some real benefits to this, obviously, energy efficiency, but also security and, you know, teacher environmental control, so that our teachers can, you know, open up to the sunlight, or if they're doing a more quiet activity, they can pull the blinds down, and it really enhances the appearance. Nobody wants to walk into a classroom and see old tattered blinds in the classroom and gives students more of a sense of pride in their classroom. Another area we've been working on is lighting. We know from many studies now that student learning rates can increase by as much as 21% in a good lighting environment versus a poor lighting environment. In this slide, you can see a worksheet on the left is how this, in a good lighting environment, how that worksheet looks, and on the right, what a poor lighting environment looks like. And it's been shown that visual acuity decreases with a poor lighting environment, and so reading comprehension likewise goes down with poor lighting environments, and getting into that better lighting environment helps with reading and comprehension. And so we've been doing lighting in a number of these buildings. You can see what that looks like here. We're also installing dimming systems in the classroom, so teachers have the ability to, you know, bring the lights up if there's a real task activity, let's say a math test or something focused. And then if, let suppose there's a quieter activity, or maybe the students are just back from recess and everybody's got a little, a lot of energy, the teacher can kind of bring the lights down, simmer the class down, and use that to control the environment. So again, you can see the schools that we're implementing this at. Some of the not so visible, but very important pieces of this, in order to do the air conditioning upgrades, we need to do electrical service upgrades at all of these buildings, and this is very extensive work. So you can see here Scarlet and Tappan, some of the work. Here at Scarlet, this is bringing new wires in. Tappan, these are new transformers. You can see here also at Tappan, all of the conduits entering the building, bringing the upgraded power into the building. We are also installing fire suppression sprinkler systems at Community High School, Scarlet, and Tappan. And in order to do that, we need a new water main installed, connected to the city water system. And so that again is a pretty extensive lot of excavation, testing for water quality, et cetera. So you can see the images of that at Tappan and Scarlet, who was also completed at Community High School. One of the really exciting pieces is the solar that we're able to do through the bond program. We have completed five installations. Bryant, the contract is currently awarded, and we're in the process of permitting that project, and we have two more solar systems. I believe they're on second briefing this evening for Pioneer High School and Westerman. Once these systems are activated, 6% of our annual electricity will be coming from solar, and then annual savings about $180,000 per year. And other than DTE, Ann Arbor Public Schools is currently the largest owner of solar energy production systems in the county. We have more solar at APS than any other institutional or private entity in the county. So that's really an accomplishment that we're really proud of, and we look forward to continuing to install more renewable energy as we strive to meet carbon and environmental goals. So this is sort of what that looks like. This is the roof of Huron High School. You can see the vast number of panels that are installed there. Forsyth Middle School, you can see that kind of the rooftop shot on the left, you can see that where the arrays are located, and then on the right, sort of that eye level shot on the roof. This is Ann Arbor Steam. One of our, really, our first significant solar project was actually installed at Steam, and you can see it up here, this little piece of the sort of upper right of your image that was installed through funding of teachers and students at A2 Steam who fundraised for that small array there, and now you can see the additional capacity that's been brought to that building. And finally, Hazely also received a solar array, very similar scale, covering a large percentage of the roof at Hazely. We've also done some paving projects this summer. Over the last several summers, we've made some pretty significant investments. This summer was a little lighter than usual. At Dickin, we reconstructed the north parking lot, and at Allen, a complete parking lot reconstruction. And these do include, and you can see it's sort of the newer concrete here that's whiter. Some areas of concrete were also replaced as part of these projects. Roof replacements, we did some sections at Huron High School. You can see those on the left here, and a pretty much a 100% replacement of the roof at Bryant Elementary School. So just some other projects from the last year. We had an issue, we had a couple of stormwater emergency repairs, one at Carpenter Elementary, where the storm line failed, and we had to excavate. You can see this kind of safety device here to hold the earth back. We had to go down about 15 feet inside of the art classroom to affect this repair. And on the right, you can see the repaired floor and the classroom being put back together. There was also a failure in the stormwater pipe that connects the Thurston Pond to the City of Ann Arbor stormwater system. It's about a 400-foot run, and we replaced about 100 feet of that pipe had essentially collapsed and disconnected from itself, causing some instability. So you can see on the left, the excavation, and on the right, the restoration of the area. So wrapping up a long, sort of a program that's been going on since about 2017 as part of the sinking fund, we've been installing new playground equipment at all of our elementary schools and K8 schools. And at Eberwhite, there were two wooden structures that had been built by the community many decades previously. Those structures were failing and no longer safe or usable. And so through a combination of the allocation from the school district, which was the same for all of our schools, and fundraising from the community and a grant from the state of Michigan, they were able to replace those old wooden structures with plastic lumber sort of versions of the same typology of playground. And this is a, part two was completed, the second one, this fall with a massive effort from the community and actually building this with their own, with their own hands, and this is a real asset for the entire Ann Arbor community. I know people from really all over the city go to use these structures. They're really awesome, and they're also ADA accessible. So you can see in this upper image where the ramp brings you up into the structure if you were to be in a wheelchair or otherwise have mobility issues. Relatively small project, but the kind of thing that, you know, with the bond and the sinking fund, we're able to take care of our building. So there was some delaminating of the concrete and spalling at Scarlet Middle School, not a real structural concern at this time, but it was something that needed to be stabilized. So we worked with contractors and our engineers to essentially repair, and you can see in the middle image, a section that was failing, and on the left here, also the kind of cracking that was starting to happen, and on the right, the completed repair. And in the spring, all of these columns will get repainted. So if you go by there right now, you'll see this kind of concrete thing that's just temporary. We need good weather to do the painting, and we'll do that in the spring. Another repair that's kind of been there for a while that needed to happen is the masonry at Tappan Middle School, in particular on the third floor at the parapet, kind of where the wall meets the roof, were some significant issues, and so we are in the process. We're about halfway done, and we'll pick this back up in the spring of removing the coping stones, that's these large limestone blocks, and redoing the wall below and reaffixing those and getting everything watertight again. We're also doing a number of window lintel, that's the steel above the window opening. There were some issues with some of those that were also in the process of addressing. And so this brings us to the financial update, and there's a few slides here for Ms. Minnick.
Thank you, Mr. Lautsana. Good evening, trustees and Ann Arbor community. So with all of this great work and the necessary improvements across the district, it's important to understand how all of this was funded. So to support our capital improvement program, there are two funding streams that we use. First is the bond fund, and those proceeds are generated by periodic sales of bonds. The other is the sinking fund, and those proceeds are generated by a recurring tax levy. And it's important to note here that although in our introduction, we spoke of those annual repairs across the district to keep our facilities and operations in good shape, those values are not included in the expenditure shown on this particular slide. But looking at those expenditures, we see the fiscal year '21 expenditures, and that timeframe for our fiscal year goes from July 1st of 2020 through June 30th of 2021. And those figures are all audited figures and represented in our financial statements. But we felt it was relevant to present the expenditure data for the four months following the end of the fiscal year, during the months of July, August, September, and October, because a majority of those construction projects occur over the summer while there are no students in the schools. So as the construction is completed, we are billed for that work and we pay the cost of that work. So largely, those expenditures do occur in the months following the end of the fiscal year. So we wanted to be sure that we properly represent the costs for the projects showcased here this evening. So we can see that the total expenditures across those two funding sources totals $47.7 million, a very significant investment in our facilities. And so about two-thirds of that funding is supported by the bond fund. And then below that, we show the types and categories of projects supported by the bond fund and then also by the sinking fund. You'll see in the bond fund that the majority of those costs are directed toward construction and professional fees. And I want to point out that the construction costs, as I mentioned, as that construction progresses, we are billed and we pay those costs. So a lot of those costs are in the past, whereas for the professional fees, those numbers may look large to you because those professional fees are for our professional consultants, our architects, engineers, construction managers, program manager, a variety of types of consultants on both projects that have already occurred, but also the planning and preparation for future projects. So a bit later in our presentation, we'll highlight some of the additional projects that are coming in the summer of 2022 and beyond, and a lot of that work is already underway in terms of planning and testing and a variety of other expenditures related there. On the sinking fund side of things, two important things to note there. The types of categories that are displayed there, you'll see that there's category peeping and roofing, and also athletic improvements and solar installations. And the reason that those are presented there is because before the bond program was approved by the voters and then the bond plan approved by the board, the sinking fund dollars were used for capital improvements across the district. So we wanted to show that historically, those costs and improvements have been borne by the sinking fund. And to be consistent, in this first year of the bond program, that is where we funded those projects again. There's no particular requirement to fund those projects in the sinking fund. They are eligible projects for the bond fund, and we may want to explore where those are funded in nature, but for now, that's where those costs have been provided, were funded by. And the second thing to note is that in the sinking fund, I noted that the fiscal year runs from July 1 through June 30, and the bond program was approved, as we mentioned, in December of 2020, so fully one year ago. However, the fiscal year spans July through June, so the bond program was approved right in the midst of the fiscal year. So I just want to point out that those expenditures listed there for the fiscal year do span the full 12 months. So it is capturing the costs of capital improvement projects that occurred in the summer of 2020, as well as costs for just this past summer. So those costs are represented here, as well as, again, the first four months of the current fiscal year. So total bond fund investments of $30.1 million, and then additional investments by the sinking fund totaling $16. Totaling sixteen point six million dollars, again for that total forty seven point seven million dollars of investments. In these two funding streams for our learning environments and our facilities across the district. On the next slide, we present the same data, but in a different format. Next slide, please. On the former slide, we present the costs and the expenditures by fund and then by category. But here we're presenting those costs by category and then by fund. So that visually you can see the difference in the types of costs born by each funding stream. But again, a grand total of forty seven point seven million dollars, a very significant investment across the district. And then our final slide for the financial update as part of the presentation. We are wanting to recap those investments, but here we do include that annual. Set aside for those operational repairs across the district. Over these sixteen months, that totaled six point four million dollars. And that brings us to a grand total of an investment across our schools of fifty four point two million dollars. It's important to note that those repairs are not eligible to be funded by the bond program or rather by the bond fund. They can be funded by the sinking fund or by the general fund, but they can they are not eligible for bond proceeds. So again, we are so grateful for this opportunity to make these improvements across our district, so fifty four point two million dollars. So thank you, and I'll over to Mr. Latsa.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Minnick. So we're just gonna, we're gonna look into the future here a little bit and have a preview of what's coming up for the. Summer of twenty two and beyond. So as I mentioned earlier, we have power conversions to complete the air conditioning upgrades at Angel Burns Park and Carpenter. Those are planned for, you know, the summer of twenty twenty two. We have phase two of mechanical electrical infrastructure upgrades at Community Scarlet and Tappan. And we'll be kicking off the phase one of Clegg and Forsyth's mechanical and electrical. Systems upgrades, and we also have four more elementaries in the queue for air conditioning upgrades by. Eberwhite, Pittsfield and Wines. We have some theater rigging improvements, these were previously approved by the board, but. We did have some supply chain issues with the materials needed for these. So we'll be completing Huron Pioneer Forsyth Slauson and Tappan this coming summer. We have a fairly light paving program, we shouldn't get used to this, we will have big years ahead. But we have kind of a patch and repair at Logan, Patton Gill, Pittsfield and Wines. We have elevators. Upgrades at Community High School Slauson and Tappan. As well as roofing at King Mitchell Pioneer, Patton Gill and Westerman. Which I believe those are on the second briefing tonight. In addition, we have two more solar projects at Pioneer and Westerman. And we're beginning, one of the the squares on the overall bond pro plan is outdoor learning environments. And so we're kicking that off in summer twenty two with the first five schools, A two steam at Northside. Abbott, Hazely, Lawton and Thurston, we have some other. Projects that don't kind of fall neatly into buckets, we have a small stormwater improvement at Lawton. A stormwater improvement at Skyline High School. Some improvements to the building envelope or the enclosure system, the siding, if you will, of Skyline High School. And we're working on upgrading the transportation building's fuel system. We also have two major projects in the early planning phase, and that's Mitchell Elementary School and Pathways to Success. Over the last school year, we've had a number of community engagement sessions. We had some environmental sustainability focused meetings, all of these meetings were open to the public. They were obviously over Zoom, given the circumstances. You can see in February, we met with a number of different local environmental stakeholder groups. And then in May of twenty twenty one, we we reached out to a lot of the our local. Parent teacher teacher organizations, service organizations, business and community organizations and invited them to a series. Of Zoom meetings to review the bond plan and upcoming projects. And so I have a few slides just to update trustees and community on our environmental sustainability initiatives. Paving is is a pretty intensive, paving and concrete are both very intensive from a carbon emission standpoint. And we've been, the last bullet here, participating in a local group that is that is. Researching and implementing low embodied carbon materials for exterior paving and concrete. And we are lucky to have our Michigan Department of Transportation, M dot has specifications that they've been using for these items, so. With asphalt, typical asphalt installation, once you have your base material in place. Is two two inch courses of asphalt, the base coat and the finish coat, using this. M dot specification, we've been using recycled asphalt in the base coat, so this is not virgin. A material, it's it's a recycled material and then we use the. The new stuff on the top that reduces the environmental impact of the paving projects. We've also been piloting low carbon concrete mixes, so in in concrete, the the. Active ingredient, if you will, is cement and the manufacturing of cement is a highly. Energy intensive process and contributes greatly to global climate change and global warming. And so by replacing or substituting a portion of that cement with other. Other industrial byproducts, we're able to reduce the carbon footprint and also. In some of these low carbon concrete mixes, you use larger aggregate or larger pieces of stone in there, so you have less total content of cementous. Material, and so we've piloted that at our recent paving at Dickens and Allen and. We'll certainly be monitoring that and it seems to be performing well so far. We've stepped up our recycling. Recycle, we recycle, and I mentioned, we're doing my kind of first slide with all the demolition, there's a lot of steel that comes out of. Pulling out boilers and ductwork and ceilings and all of this, so. This last summer, we recycled over a hundred and ten tons of steel. And we also participated for the first time with Armstrong Worldwide, they're one of the major manufacturers of ceiling tiles. And we were able to recycle a semi trailer full of ceiling tile essentially, and it goes back to their plant. And then they, whatever their industrial process, they essentially turn that used ceiling tile into new ceiling tiles. And so that's something that we're, as we continue to do, lighting and ceiling is definitely something that we're. Are going to continue to to participate in. We do have our four electric buses in service, these were subsidized, if you will, through a grant from. Eagle with the Volkswagen settlement dollars that were provided to the state of Michigan. And the the a little bit erratic chart you see on your right there is actually the battery cycling in these buses, so as the. As the line gets lower to the bottom, the charge is being drawn down. And then as the line moves up in the graph, that battery is being recharged and you can kind of see that the day to day cycling of those batteries. We've been learning a lot from these and one of the next steps on this is to implement which which. Something that was planned from the beginning, but is turning into kind of a technical challenge, which I'm sure we'll over we'll we'll overcome with our partners at DTE and Proterra. But we would be one of the first, once we get this capacity installed to utilize. Vehicle to grid and grid to building capacity, so in other words, the batter the electric. The the energy stored in the batteries, let's say on a weekend when we're not using the buses and there's a high load on the electrical. System in Ann Arbor could actually pull energy or electricity out of the buses. Supplement the grid and then, you know, when we need them to be charged. The energy would flow back maybe overnight or something like that into the buses, so that that's a really exciting technology and that's. Really, when we talk about electrifying our electric infrastructure for for environmental sustainability reasons. This kind of vehicle to grid, vehicle to building. Capability is is critical to making that transition, so we're excited to be participating. In the early stages of understanding and implementing that that technology. We're also excited to be kicking off, we do have a geothermal heating cooling system at Skyline High School. It is a it is a horizontal system. In moving forward, we're in the bidding phase currently for Clegg Middle School and Forsyth Middle School for their major. Mechanical electrical systems upgrade and we're looking at vertical geothermal wells, which is a more traditional. Way to do that at both Clegg and Middle School, and you can see the drawing here at the bottom is. That's Clegg Middle School and you can see where the geothermal wells would be placed and there's a. A vault here, this is all sort of behind Clegg School, pretty out of the way back there, but. Once those wells are installed and the turf is restored, you will not know that that there's a geothermal field underneath there. And that'll move us in the direction of all electric heating and cooling systems with. Just a small natural gas backup to handle that peak load or that that polar vortex kind of an event. The first ninety to ninety five percent of the heating and cooling would be. Taken care of by the geothermal system, and then if we do get that really extreme cold event. Where we've got sub zero temperatures for a week or something like that, that's where the natural gas piece comes in to supplement that system. I mean, it it makes from a cost benefit standpoint, getting that last five percent out of the geothermal system, you would have to significantly increase the field. Just for those few days and it it seems to make economic sense to have that natural gas backup. And that will move us in the direction of electrifying our heating and cooling systems and advancing carbon neutrality goals. Just a little more on that outdoor learning enhancement, we did do the playgrounds as part of the. Of the sinking fund over the last several years and that program's kind of wrapping up. And looking forward, our outdoor learning environments, we're really looking at how can we support. Academic opportunities for our students and teachers to get outside during actual class time to do things like reading. Even mathematics, philosophy, so many other things, nature studies, science, things like that. So how can we create that support through our investment in infrastructure for outdoor learning? And this is a really, it's not a huge capital investment from a dollar standpoint, but. I think it'll really have a lot of impact on our schools and it's certainly. Just from a personal standpoint, this is super fun to work on, you know, paving is paving, but this outdoor learning is just really exciting to be starting this endeavor. We've also started to formed our environmental sustainability task force. And the focus is to advise the Board of Education on a formal sustainability plan. And we are in the process of early process of developing that. We are conducting monthly monthly meetings and our first few meetings are really looking at. Best practice examples of school districts around the country and who already have sustainability plans. You know, how how did they develop their plan, how do they implement their plan, how do they track, how do they report? Those kinds of things and we're really excited about that and we've been making pretty good progress and we'll have another, you know, meetings in in twenty twenty two. And to support that work, we're really excited to have posted a new position for the school district that will. Support all of our environmental sustainability goals and work directly with the task force, capital projects and really. All of our APS departments, a director of environmental sustainability. This job is currently posted on the website and we're accepting applications for this this new position. And we've been in the in the background of building a website for the capital improvement. Program, so we've been working with a local partner, Build Create Studios on developing the. Website for the bond and sinking fund program. And I just want to shout out to them and also Tricia from Gilbane Building Company, who's been really helping facilitate this work. And if my technology. Allows it, I'll just take a quick peek, so this is the homepage and you can see right up front, you just. Find your school, so you just type in the name of your school and it'll take you directly to a a school specific website. Or subpage, we have the the history of the twenty nineteen bond, so this is. All of the board meetings and documentation going back to the bond campaign are are captured here. The program schedule, which I showed slides of earlier. Is captured here, so you can see your school and the upcoming schedule. There's a FAQ section, so some of the frequently asked questions. You know, what was on the ballot, for instance, so we have the language from the ballot is here from the bond campaign. And there's a number of frequently asked questions. We have a special page for contractors who are interested in bidding on all of this capital work. So you can see, we have a number of open solicitations currently here. We have some that are upcoming and then these are all. Closed currently that were previously bid. And so we go back to kind of the homepage, you can just type in our school. Bryant Elementary. And you'll see a nice picture of Bryant here, a little bit of statistics, the location, the building size. There is a link to the Bryant Elementary. Web page and there's also a link from the Bryant Elementary webpage back over here, if you happen to be at the Bryant. Web page and you want to see what's coming in the bond program. Of course, you gotta have the logo in there with the mascots, and so the projects are. Green are active projects. Yellow are completed projects. And then upcoming projects are in blue, so you can see here that solar array installation. At Bryant is is in progress, the roof replacement, which we was earlier in the presentation is completed. We did some classroom renovations at Bryant. Some new playground equipment. Some new shade trees were installed at many of our schools through through the sinking fund. We did HVAC building management system upgrades. We did more renovations to some of the the shared spaces, the media center, the steam lab at Bryant. There were some security updates. Water bottle filling stations, new furniture, musical instruments, more playground equipment. Some parking lot repairs back in twenty seventeen and then you'll see here. In the current plan, there's an outdoor learning enhancement in twenty three twenty four. And a major project scheduled for twenty twenty nine through twenty thirty. So we can go back here and you just sort of type in your school, whatever, you know, if you go Pioneer. Pioneer High School and then you can see all the work that's happened at Pioneer High School. So this is live currently, the website is A two schools bond dot O R G. Thankfully, some of the more, as soon as the bond passed, people started buying website domains, we didn't. But we we caught caught onto that pretty quick, so we were able to to secure A two schools bond dot O R G. So that's the website, again, the address is here at the bottom and the link is live in the presentation on board docs. So I just want to take a minute to thank all of the partners, you know, we've had. We have great relationships and you know, this is certainly obviously improving our schools is the goal here and creating wonderful learning environments and supportive. Environment for our staff, but it's also a driver of economic growth and creating job opportunities in our community and the surrounding area. So we have Gilbane Building Company as a program management group and McCarthy Smith. K E O and Clark serving as construction managers. We have a whole host of architects and engineering partners, you can see. All these folks here, some of these people are very specialized, for instance, Nova Consulting helps us with solar. people are very specialized. For instance, Nova Consulting helps us with solar. And some of them are broader and have more extensive involvement. And of course, our trade contractors, there are so many guys that took us three slides to get all of these folks in here. And we hope we didn't miss anybody, but it's, it's a lot of folks that you can see, electricians, paving contractors, roofing contractors, specialty contractors like iStudio on the, on the theater work, fencing. You can see more of those here, electrical contractors, environmental contractors, excavation, and some more roofing, windows, floor coverings, mechanical systems, all of these wonderful contractors that are helping us to implement this bond program. And of course, thank you to our Ann Arbor Public Schools community for all of your generous support. And I guess that's it. So those are, that's our annual report of the capital improvement program. And I'm happy to answer any questions the trustees may have.
Thank you, Mr. Latsana. I do want to share, trustees, that as we promised our committee, we'll report this every year by the end of the year. And then in January, we will mail out, we'll be environmentally responsible, just mail out a summary, but enough of a summary where every single household in our APS community will receive this annual update. So we're excited to put that together. We'll be sharing that with you later during January and getting that sent out to, as a part of our annual reporting. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll just say thanks as well. I feel like I'm the broken record today to repeating the thanks. But I did want to, I did want to shout out trustees Nelson and trustee Mitchell, who also served on iterations of the bond committee. One of the beautiful things about this bond is it, it's like 20, 30 years. And so there will be a lot of trustees that, that come and go through that time. Just wanted to make sure that we recognize those folks who, who served in that capacity also early on that aren't serving on the board right now. We do appreciate it. They spent a lot of long hours at it. So, so thanks, Mr. Latsana. Thanks, Ms. Minnick, as well.